I'm going to introduce our two ladies that are going to be doing the National Anthem. They are Emma Elbert and then Libby Tafe from Kennedy High School.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody, for coming tonight. My name's Mary Rice. I'm president of Legal Women Voters of Bloomington. We're pleased to see all of you here tonight for these two candidate forums back-to-back, cosponsored this year by Legal Women Voters Bloomington and the PTSA Council from Bloomington. So, we're really happy to be able to cosponsor this with another organization. It just makes the event stronger and better attended, so thank you to the PTSA. Thanks, everybody, for coming, and thank you especially to the candidates for running for office and for coming tonight to respond to questions. We'll start with the City Council forum, and that will last until about 7:20. We have eight candidates for four seats: the At-Large seat, District 2, District 3, and District 4. I hope everyone will take a copy of our voter information guide. It contains a wealth of information about the candidates, about how and where to vote, about early voting, and about the Legal Women Voters. So, we hope you'll take it. It also has a link to the candidate videos, a link to what will be posted from this candidate forum, and so on. So, it's full of information, so please take one. And remember, early voting is open. You can vote early. You won't have to wait in line that way. You can register to vote when you vote early. And it's open at Civic Plaza now until the day before Election Day. It's even open the Saturday before Election Day. I'd like to thank the volunteers from the Legal Women Voters and from the PTSA who are here tonight and for putting all of this together, most especially Amanda Crombie and Charlotte Westby from the League and from the PTSA, who did an amazing amount of work pulling things together. I also want to thank the city of Bloomington for allowing us to have this forum here tonight, and Bloomington Cable for filming this forum. It'll be rebroadcast on cable and will also be available on YouTube, accessible from the city website on YouTube or from the Legal Women Voters Bloomington website. The Legal Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The Legal Women Voters never endorses any political candidate or party. The views expressed in the forum tonight are those of the candidates, not those of the Legal Women Voters. It's our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss issues face-to-face that are important to you and so that you can ask them questions also. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues that you want covered, but we have card sorters. We have three card sorters here. If you put your questions on your cards, the card sorters will go through them and do their very best to make sure every single issue that's raised is addressed by the candidates. The sorters tonight for the City Council forum are Monica Williams, Denise Royer, and Catherine, who said all League of Women Voters volunteers. And believe me, that's a hard job, so thanks for doing this. Most of the questions of the City Council candidates will be asked of a group of four candidates from two districts. So, the first question will go to four candidates from two districts. The next question will go to the four candidates from the other two districts, and back and forth. If you wish to photograph or record this event, you're welcome to do so, but please don't interfere with the audience or the proceedings as you do that. Now, I'm happy to introduce Debbie McNeil, who's an experienced moderator from the Legal Women Voters of Edina and who's been with us before. So, at this point, I'll turn the matter over to Debbie. Thank you, Debbie.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Debbie McNeil, as Mary said, member of Legal Women Voters Edina, and I'm the moderator for tonight's candidate forum. Before we get started, let's all get out our cellphones, please, and silence them. Thank you very much for doing that. I want you to know that all the candidates who filed for office were invited to this forum tonight, and here are the rules and the format that we'll operate by. The speaking order was set before the forum, and it will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement and one minute for closing remarks. In order to ask more questions in the available time, because we have eight candidates, we're going to alternate, as Mary said, between two groups. The At-Large and District 2 candidates will be asked some questions, and the District 3 and District 4 candidates will be asked other questions. And the candidates will each have one minute to answer a question asked of their group. And before the closing remarks, the candidates will each have one minute to address any question they want that was not asked of their group or to expand on some answer that they gave before. And as Mary said, the League volunteers will time the candidate responses. Here are the volunteers, and they will hold up signs, candidates, to show you when you have 30 seconds left and when you have 15 seconds left and when you must stop, and I would ask you to follow their directions. This forum will also have one or more lightning rounds, where we're going to ask the candidates to answer a question very briefly, like in one sentence or even in one word, and all the candidates will have a chance to answer those lightning round questions. As moderator, I will ask all the questions, and all the questions will become, the written questions, will become the property of Legal Women Voters Bloomington. No campaign materials or signs, brochures, cards, buttons, or clothing with candidate information are allowed in the Bloomington Civic Plaza. The forum's being video-recorded, so we ask that you hold your applause until the end of the forum. And candidates, I ask that you speak directly into the microphone, so your responses are heard and picked up by the video, and this is very important. I'm going to ask you a question, and you're going to want to look to me to answer, but I ask you to look at the audience instead, because then on the video, you will be looking directly at the camera. Now, I'd like to introduce all the candidates. These are the candidates for City Council who are appearing tonight. Starting to my left and continuing, the At-Large candidates are Michael Arulfo and Nathan Coulter. The District 2 candidates are Shawn Nelson and Eldon Spencer. The District 3 candidates are Jack Beloga and Larry Frost. The District 4 candidates are Patrick Martin and John Olson. Let's start with opening statements by the candidates for one minute each, and I think we'll just go directly down the line, starting with Michael Arulfo and then continuing right down to the end for your opening statement. Michael Arulfo, please begin if you'd like.
In 1980, a small Filipino boy came to the United States to get an education and to be reunited with his family. Thirty-three years later, that same Filipino boy moved to Bloomington to start a family. That Filipino boy is myself, Michael Arulfo, and I'd like to ask for your support for City Council. I'm running for City Council because of three things. One is that I believe in a strong education. That was the key to my success in life and in my career. Second, I believe in unifying Bloomington. I have the background in diversity and a lifetime experience in crossing cultures, and I'd like to bring that quality to the City Council. Third, I believe in protecting the green space. I don't believe in the city selling its green space, but I do recognize the need for the city to grow, to adjust to needs for housing for seniors, as well as attracting younger families to Bloomington. If you'd like more information, you can visit my website at michaelarulfo.com.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
Well, good evening, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, the League, for hosting this. I'm Nathan Coulter, and I'd be honored to earn your vote. By way of my own background, I've lived in Bloomington for all of my 31 years, and I've been honored to serve our community through my work at the state legislature and by serving on the boards for the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority and the Purpitch Center for Arts Education. I'm running because I see so much potential in Bloomington. Our strong schools, low price of government, and strong fiscal position, and the fact that we are a well-established community really have prepared us to do great work. And I believe if we have forward-looking leadership that's focused on making progress for all of us, we can do remarkable things. I'm really looking forward to this conversation tonight.
Thank you very much. Shawn Nelson?
Thank you, Debbie, and thank you to the League for holding this forum and everyone for attending tonight. First, my thoughts the last couple of days have been with the victims in Las Vegas, their families and friends, and that whole community. It's absolutely heartbreaking and inexcusable that events like that continue to happen in our country. We all recognize that Bloomington faces a threat at the Mall of America. I am confident in our police, and I will support policy that helps protect our officers, residents, workers, and visitors. My name is Shawn Nelson. I've lived in Bloomington for 18 years. My wife, Ann, and our daughter, Station Emma, have made our home here. I'm a small-business owner. I've been a leader in the business community and housing industry for 20 years. I'm running to help build a community where we can each shop and play in our neighborhoods. I will work hard on housing, transportation, and school issues, and I will strongly support efforts to ensure all people are welcome in Bloomington.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer?
Thank you. When 13 of us, who are very committed to serving Bloomington, and all of us, I'm sure, would have done well, came before the City Council, and I was honored to be chosen to hold this seat, I've tried to take that honor and to build on it. I've been to every council meeting. I've been to every study session. I've worked very hard to learn, and I understand now why the council really wanted to know if you were going to run, because there is so much to learn. So, basically, I think I was chosen in part because I have experience and a background. I've run a small business that turned into a medium-sized business, and so I understand when the budget came before us for the first time last month, how we need to set priorities. I have been an advocate. I've gone to the U.S. Supreme Court to protect the rights of women to equal treatment under Human Rights Act. I'd appreciate the chance to keep on serving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga?
Good evening, and I'm going to echo the sentiments of thanks to all of you here and to the League of Women Voters. It's been my honor and privilege to serve you for the past two terms as the District 3 City Council member. Thank you for your trust and confidence in me. This is a job I take very seriously. I do because I genuinely care about our city, its future, its people, and vitality. A little bit about me. I had a successful career as an executive of a Fortune 500 company and later as a small business owner. My civic engagement and participation spans more than 20 years. During that time, I served on many boards and commissions to learn how the city operates. I now use that knowledge and experience as a member of the council to better serve you and its residents. My guiding principle is to support those initiatives which enhance the quality of life for the majority of citizens of Bloomington.
Thank you very much. Larry Frost?
My name is Larry Frost, and I'm a retired U.S. Army Lieutenant Colonel, originally coming into the service as a private. I decided to settle here in Bloomington when I retired, and I want to give something back to this community. I served all over the world. If you want to talk about diversity, I've served in between 20 and 30 countries. I speak a number of languages, including, I'm a native Spanish speaker. That's one of my concerns, because I think that the Latinos in this community, many, have told me they don't feel represented on the council. I will try to do that, even though I'm an Anglo. Bullet points. City Council wants to sell green space at Highland. Bad idea. Why? They say it's because we need housing. Why not go to the South Loop, where we're redeveloping anyway, and let the businesses, who say they need more workers here, develop a project there to get housing? Putting an apartment on Highland Greens, selling green space, and dumping traffic onto a major road is just not good common sense. I'll show you the kind of things the council gets us into. At the review of the garbage collection fracas, the last meeting they reviewed it, and Mayor Winstead actually said, "I'm told," that we're being hoodwinked. Why? Because half the routes can be missed, and we still count that as okay. Not good.
Thank you very much. Patrick Martin?
Howdy, everyone. My name is Patrick Martin. I'm a product of Bloomington, grew up in the South Mall of America, renovating a home, settled down a few blocks away. I declared my candidacy for the City Council because throughout my service on city commissions like the Advisory Board of Health, data has underscored again and again that while we've been one of the strongest cities in the state for upwards of half a century, we're entering the greatest period of demographic change we've ever faced. And make no mistake, supporting our growing senior population, attracting, retaining new families long-term, and bridging longstanding divides in business development across our central highway are going to be a big challenge. But I've seen throughout my career, with local churches and nonprofits like the Salvation Army, that by equipping families with the tools they need to succeed, you can take challenges like that and turn them into the opportunities that will fuel our growth for the next 50 years. I want to thank the Legal Women Voters for this opportunity to share a little bit of my three-point plan, how we can get moving in that direction, and looking forward to a great conversation here tonight.
Thank you very much. John Olson?
Thank you. Thanks. An important service to the community, and a lot of work has gone into this. I moved to northeast Bloomington 14 years ago. I've invested a lot of time and energy volunteering. I've been on the planning commission for five years, and now concluding four years of service on the City Council. Any community needs to solve problems and strategize its future. One problem that we have is a shortage of affordable housing. Two areas that especially require future planning are that we have a great senior center, but we could better serve our seniors and younger families, virtually anyone with a comprehensive community center. The neighborhoods in northeast Bloomington are experiencing unprecedented change. Built in the '50s and '60s by young families, we're seeing a hot market, and we are seeing people that are younger moving in and different cultures moving in. I've worked hard on each of these issues and others. More work needs to be done, which is why I seek reelection.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll start with a question for the District 3 and District 4 candidates, and here is the question. And I think that we'll mix up the responses, but you'll stay with the person that you are running against for your same district. So, for the first question, this will be, would you be willing to answer in this order? Patrick Martin, John Olson, Jack Beloga, and Larry Frost. Here's the question. Should the Bloomington, pardon me, should the Bloomington Police be required to record the race of people who are pulled over for traffic stops? Why or why not? Can we begin with you, Patrick Martin?
I believe first and foremost that we need to draw a hard red line on enforcing any kind of immigration standards when it comes to Bloomington local police. The fact of the matter is, over the course of the past 35 to 50 years, we've had more and more segregation, both by income and by race, across 35W, just because of the nature of the jobs available, the nature of the housing available. Over time, that's just occurred naturally. I think by making the police a source of anxiety, a source to be avoided or potentially even afraid of, you're only making those communities more isolated. You're making those communities less willing to cooperate with city government. And when the fact of the matter is, those neighborhoods are the single largest source of our population growth in the city at the moment, we need to make sure that they feel comfortable being stakeholders in the process, that they have a seat at the table, and that they're helping to drive our growth moving forward. By making Bloomington Police essentially look as though that they're chasing controversial federal priorities, I think that takes you very, very far in the wrong direction.
Thank you very much. John Olson?
Thank you. We need to be moving more and more in the direction of seeing other people as simply being other people. And so, we need to move away from seeing each other as different, because in fact we are far more similar than we are different. And so, in terms of policing actions, that has to happen in that situation. It's very difficult to be a police officer and respond to a variety of situations and need to be responding very quickly and, in many cases, very affirmatively. But somehow, we need to end up as a culture, because it's not just the police. It's the way we look at each other, and we pass that on throughout the culture. So, they should not be singled out and recorded in that basis.
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga?
Thank you. We are very fortunate within the city of Bloomington to have one of the finest metro police agencies that exist. And they are well-trained, they are well-equipped, and they're very well-educated. As a result, our police force should not be required to record the race of any individual pulled over. And why is the question? Why is because we're all the same humans, we're all the same people, and to record that really creates an aura of suspicion and of concern by the people doing that and the people who are being pulled over. I see no value in that, and I do not believe that our police have done that in the past, and I encourage them to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Frost?
I spent 27 years defending the Constitution, and I carried it in my pack the whole time I was in the Army. Now, I'm an attorney. I do constitutional law cases. No, we should not be recording race, because race is not relevant to the law. If you violated the law, it doesn't matter whether you're Mexican or American. That's nonsense. Police should not be allowed to record that, in my opinion. Why? I think I just gave part of the reason, but let me give you another reason. I go out and I talk to Latinos in parts of Bloomington. Most of them are not afraid of the cops. There are some immigration concerns, yes, but in general, they're not afraid of our police. That's the way it should be. I don't think that the police should be recording race. I don't think they should be recording anything except what you did and where you live, and I do think we have a great Bloomington Police Department. I know quite a few of them. I've worked with them on a number of issues, not in the way that Jack has as a councilman, of course. But that's the way we should continue to do policing here. It's simply morally and legally wrong to do otherwise.
Thank you very much. Now, here's a question for the At-Large and District 2 candidates, and can we answer in this order? Shawn Nelson, followed by Eldon Spencer, Michael Arulfo, and Nathan Coulter. Here is the question. The status of sanctuary cities has become an issue in the national debate. Do you favor or not favor Bloomington's becoming a sanctuary city, and tell us why or why not? Can we start with Shawn Nelson?
As I mentioned in my opening remarks, I think we need to be a community that is welcoming and open to all people. We absolutely have to send a message that all people are safe in this community, that regardless of their immigration, their national origin, their race, that they will not be singled out and targeted. So, I definitely do not support our police targeting those and helping out in those types of enforcements in our community.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer?
Thank you. The immigrant experience is one that has made our country what it is. Two of my four grandparents were born in another country. My daughter's in-laws were born in another country, unfortunately are safe in Las Vegas, and thank you, Shawn, for those gracious comments in your opening speech. Sanctuary city has kind of become a buzzword, and that's one of the problems in our country, I think, is where we become too polarized. We need to think of things together. I would rather focus on the fact that our police officers' priority, as a number of the gentlemen down to my left discuss, should be enforcing local laws. But at the same time, we can't be indifferent either to the needs of our minority communities and the fears of their communities, but also to abuses when people threaten extreme results that are unrelated to the law enforcement needs of the federal government and others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo?
So, I'm definitely in favor of Bloomington making moves that would allow the diverse populations in Bloomington to feel comfortable and not feel like they're not welcome in Bloomington. I think that sends entirely the wrong message. Diversity is a strength in Bloomington, so we should do everything in our power to send that message to all the diverse communities in Bloomington, because that's the fastest-growing segment of the population in the city and represents the future. And so, by putting our police force in a bad position that would force them to discriminate or cause fear to the diverse populations, I think that's not the right thing to do. It's not fair to the police force. And it's sending the wrong message to the diverse population in Bloomington. So, definitely not in favor of putting Bloomington in that position. So, I would like to see Bloomington become a sanctuary city.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
There's a lot of fear in communities of color all across Minnesota and, excuse me, within Bloomington in particular. The reality is that people are people. These folks who are worried about these things, they are our friends, they are our neighbors, they're the kids that our kids go to school with. Protecting them and making sure that immigrant communities are welcome and they feel safe here in Bloomington is not only the morally right thing to do, but it's also a better use of our resources. It is not the job of a local police department to enforce federal immigration law. At the end of the day, like I said, people are people, and we all contribute to the community, and we all make wonderful neighbors.
Thank you very much. This next question is for the District 3 and 4 candidates, and I'll ask you to answer in this order. In fact, it's an order that starts with John Olson and goes to your respective rights: John Olson, Patrick Martin, Larry Frost, Jack Beloga. Here's the question. Would you talk, please, about the proposed new community center and your stand on the proposal? Let's start with John Olson.
Thank you, yes. My position from the outset and technically to today is that we need to make sure that the community center that we are talking about doing in collaboration with YMCA meets needs that are present. So, one of the things, I will be actually one of three representatives on the stakeholder group that will be meeting soon with those representatives from the Y. And in the process of doing that, we are going to be seeking more information about what the needs are of this community. We have an excellent community center for seniors, and we want to hang on to what that function is doing. But we also have young families. We want to attract more young families. It's contributing to health. And so, my position is that we will look at it closely. It needs to be feasibly within our, with our realm, and partnering with the Y should be very helpful with that.
Thank you very much. Patrick Martin?
Yes, I'm most certainly in favor of taking a look at a flexible-use community center that's operated in partnership with another provider like the YMCA. I think it really tackles what's at the heart of the demographic transition we're going through. First, because we'll be able to use that flexible space for our growing senior population. One of the most effective series of programs we have in the community are those things that we offer at Creekside Community Center. Even just basic things like walking club, arts and crafts, technology tutoring, is proven to have an impact on long-term health outcomes for our seniors, makes them get socialization that's better for them, and makes them feel a part of the community they built. In addition, one of the things that's preventing young families from coming to town is a lack of affordable childcare options. Right now, our programs like the VIEW and Mini VIEW, operated through the Parks and Recreation Department, are operating pretty much at capacity. If we had more of that flexible-use space, we'd be able to expand our summer childcare options, give parents the flexibility to be able to go in, put those extra hours in at work, and be able to pay some of the increasingly rising rents that we see here in Bloomington. It could really be a key to a lot of issues.
Thank you very much. Larry Frost?
Look, last year, our business tax income in this city went down by $2.5 million. I think a lot more important things for the council to focus on right now, like the business climate in the community, than the community center. As far as the community center itself goes, I don't have enough information at this point, because I don't have access to some of the things the councilmen do to really give you good answers. But I can tell you, the things I would look at are, has there been a serious look at using joint-use facilities like our school lands? Has there been a serious look at joint-use facilities with how the Y would work? Has there been a serious look at what the cost would be over the long term? Those are the kinds of questions I would ask in trying to evaluate a community center. But the first question, I think, is, what are the priorities of the city? Is that the highest priority at a time when our housing stocks are keeping new families from moving in, because of the 2008 crisis keeping new family entry-level housing off the market, and our business income taxes are going down because business is declining? Those are bigger issues, and I would deal with that first. Those are bigger issues, and I would deal with that first.
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga?
Thank you. Creekside, which is our current community center, is an outdated, obsolete facility, which was a former elementary school. Really, today, it only acts as a facility to meet the needs of our senior population. We are not providing any services for that segment other than the senior community. As a result, there's a great need out there. Our surveys have proven that. Our study committees have proven that, and we're interested in doing that in a fiscally responsive and a manner in which meets the needs of the community. This is being studied jointly by the city staff and by our partner, the Y. Just to address a misstatement, our business taxes declined because of permitting. That $2.5 million was an all-time high in the prior year for permit fees, so it's natural that that raises and lowers from year to year.
Thank you very much. The next question is for the at-large and District Two candidates, and can we answer, starting with Eldon Spencer and going to your right? Eldon Spencer, Shawn Nelson, Nathan Coulter, Michael Arulfo. Here's the question. Do you approve of the purchase of Kelly Farm? Assuming that the purchase of Kelly Farm goes through, what do you think is the best use of the land, aside from the World's Fair?
Well, actually, I think it's actually an expo because cities the size of Bloomington only get the smaller prize every two years. But do I approve of the purchase? Yes. The questions I asked of the city assessor were very detailed and were needed to convince me and get my vote that we were paying a fair price. And while these kind of properties, and this is the last farm in Bloomington, don't go on the market very often, I was convinced that it was. And now we can control the development. What ultimate purposes that can be done for? Frankly, I need to study the task force and actually also depend a little on outside circumstances. If, in fact, we did with a lot of outside funds support at Expo, we would want to do it with end uses that could become permanent housing, hopefully a little less ugly than the habitat housing. Anybody knows Montreal, but maybe ones that could be used for a campus for, if not a place like Amazon, at least for some other good employers in town.
Thank you very much. Shawn Nelson?
Yeah, I approve of the purchase of the Kelly Farms for the World Expo. As I do understand it, that that purchase is contingent upon actually getting the Expo, which I believe the decision will be made in November. So my understanding is the city is not obligated to buy that if it does not have that event. In terms of future uses, I would certainly think that would potentially be a better location for some of the housing that the current council is looking at putting at Highland Greens Golf Course. I think that it would be an opportunity for a business development area. Obviously, that South Loop area and connecting into the transportation and things like that has been very successful. The council has done a great job in that area. It controls a substantial amount of other property and has good partnerships in that area that I think should be leveraged.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter?
Well, to echo the comment of the folks to my left, yeah, I think that is a positive development on the whole, although I certainly will miss driving by the sheep. You know, there is a lot of potential all over Bloomington, but in that area specifically, as Shawn alluded to, the South Loop, the South Loop Development being near the Mall, being near the Minnesota Valley National Wildlife Refuge. There, I mean, there's a lot of potential for whether it's housing, and certainly affordable housing is a need that we have here in Bloomington, or, you know, potentially some kind of business development as well. I think on the whole, it's a great move. Like Eldon said, I think it was conducted in a fiscally responsible way, and more power to you.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo?
Well, obviously, you know, echo the statements everybody made, you know, it's pretty, I'm definitely in favor of the move. It's pretty tough to beat a World's Fair, but other alternative uses for the land, I see, as already mentioned, it's a better site for a community center. You know, Creekside's a good location in Central, but one of the issues with the Creekside location is the transportation issues that it could cause. If the community center is very successful, you can imagine the traffic to be caused. So by moving the community center to a location like South Loop area, that would be taken care of. Plus, you'd also be able to leverage some of the funds that are available only in developing in the South Loop area. I also would like to, I also see it as a better location for any kind of affordable housing units, certainly much better than the current spaces that are proposed right now, like Highland. I think it also is a good place to create a park. You know, protecting green space is a big part of my platform, and I think that some of the land is not really used for development, but could be used for great parks.
Thank you very much. Now it's time for a lightning round. And the way I'd like to ask you to do this is that everyone will get to answer this question, but just with one word. So the answer, please answer yes or no to this question. And let's, I'll tell you the order that will go in. So we'll start with Jack Beloga, John Olson, Michael Arulfo, Patrick Martin, Eldon Spencer, Nathan Coulter, Shawn Nelson, Larry Frost. And I'll call on you again, you don't have to remember that, but just, so you don't, I just don't want you to be surprised. Okay, this is the question. Please answer yes or no. Do you favor having the city of Bloomington raise the age of tobacco sales from 18 to 21? Jack Beloga?
Absolutely.
John Olson?
Yes.
Michael Arulfo?
Yes.
Patrick Martin?
Yes.
Eldon Spencer?
Enthusiastically.
Nathan Coulter?
Definitely.
Shawn Nelson?
Yes.
Larry Frost?
No.
Now, let's go back to one-minute answers so that you're not so constrained. The next question is for the group of candidates that are at-large in District Two, starting with Michael Arulfo, Nathan Coulter, Shawn Nelson, Eldon Spencer. Here's the question. What would you do to support the ever-growing need for more affordable housing? Michael Arulfo, can I ask you to? I'm sorry, I just told you the wrong thing. I want to start instead with the District Three and Four candidates. Pardon me, because the other candidates just had a turn to answer. Okay, so can these candidates please answer this question? Larry Frost, Jack Beloga, John Olson, and Patrick Martin. That's my mistake. Here's the question again. What would you do to support the ever-growing need for more affordable housing? Larry Frost, would you be willing to start?
Affordable housing is an interesting, flexible term. Let's call it what it is. It's called subsidized housing. It's where we take money from the public treasury and pay part of the cost of rent. I don't favor that. I don't think that's the city's function. If that kind of function exists, it's at the state level. The city shouldn't be involved in that. So no, I don't favor putting in affordable housing, if that's what it means. But if by affordable housing you mean starting to change the regulations so it doesn't cost a darn much to build a house here, if by affordable housing you mean rezoning so that housing can be done more inexpensively, yes, and I'll give you a concrete example. There are major neighborhoods in this city which are zoned residential, one single family where Latinos live. A lot of those houses have two or three families living in them. Okay, let's recognize the reality and help some of these people that have to work two or three jobs and say, we're going to zone it so you can have two families living there. It doesn't cost anything, it gets the city out of the way, and it saves money. Now, that is not, I'm not making a specific proposal, I'm trying to tell you how I think. And how I think is, get the government out of the way in areas where the government shouldn't be doing things at all.
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga?
Thank you. Affordable housing is not subsidized housing in a traditional term. Many people think of subsidized housing as Section 8 housing, where you get a vulture. Affordable housing is, is to make housing available and affordable to the majority of the population who earn an income of the median of the area. So what can a city do for that? Well, the city can do many things for that. One of the things it can do is provide services which are affordable. And that is in all the array of city services, including taxes, to help keep housing costs down, because it's the entirety of the cost of housing, not just the initial purchase price, that makes things affordable or not affordable.
Thank you very much. John Olson?
Thank you. To support affordable housing, I will continue to do what I have been doing. First of all, there's the private side, meaning developers, there's nonprofit contribution efforts, and then there's public. On the private side, I'm pleased to say that the saturation of market housing, which is on the upper end of those who have more money, is beginning to be saturated, and so United Properties is beginning to move more in the direction of actually offering it without much incentive from local. The nonprofits, naturally occurring affordable housing, Ian recently bought a large number, 400, units in Bloomington. And what the public can do on the public side is, we need to look at ordinances, and we are, in fact, doing that, by increasing density to go up. The reality is that society has permitted the near demise of the middle class, and so it's a more complicated issue than what we're looking at.
Thank you. Patrick Martin?
Yeah, this is a pretty fascinating question, especially at this moment. Right now, we're about to see the greatest single turnover in single-family housing, especially on the east side, that we've seen really since the boom years following World War II. A lot of these single-family homes that were first put up and now are kind of turning over to a new generation. It's critical that we both protect and preserve that affordable housing, not just subsidized housing for the very, very bottom of the income scale, but guys like me, like my buddies, like folks I know that are just out of college, that are saddled with student loan debt, and would love to put down roots long-term in a city like Bloomington, but just can't when vacancy rates are under 1.6%, when rents continue to skyrocket. I've got a good friend who would have loved to live in Bloomington, but it took him upwards of five and a half months to find a one-bedroom apartment here in town, ended up having to go to Richfield to find it. We need to preserve the affordable housing we have, prevent out-of-state buyers from coming in, knocking it down, and putting up luxury options, and make sure that the folks like the generation that built this community can build our prosperity moving forward for years to come.
Thank you very much. Here's a question now for candidates Nathan Coulter, Michael Arulfo, Eldon Spencer, and Shawn Nelson. What can the city do to be more bike and pedestrian-friendly? Can we start with Nathan Coulter?
Certainly. This is actually something that I talk about quite a lot. You know, my, so my wife and I have lived in our home for a shade over a year and a half, and she was, shall we say, hesitant about moving out to the suburbs. And one of the reasons for that was that she liked being able to walk and bike places, and Bloomington really isn't very well-suited for that. We absolutely need to focus on making Bloomington a more walkable and bikable city, and really just generally easier to get around without having to drive everywhere. We need to, you know, I think what a lot of folks don't get about this issue is that in many ways it kind of is a, if you build it, they will come sort of issue. If we put in the bike lanes, if we put in walking paths and sidewalks that folks are able to use, they will. And I think that's also going to better serve the folks who live here now and attract more folks who are looking for a place to settle down.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo?
So Bloomington is a city that was designed for the car. And I think, given the, we have a great opportunity right now with the infrastructure that's getting older in Bloomington as we're replacing it and changing it, make it to be more friendly to pedestrians as well as bikers. I believe in adding additional bike lanes where it makes sense. I think that will encourage folks that are currently, don't feel safe using the streets for their bikes. So I think that that would be one way to address the issue. And I also believe that more of an effort needs to be looked at to design the streets so they're more connected as a whole. So even if you're installing the bike lanes or additional sidewalks, it doesn't mean that the streets are going to be more connected, and that's a disadvantage. So I think that the city needs to look at ways in order to create not only the added space for pedestrians and bikers, but also a way to connect the streets.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer?
Thank you. Fortunately, our governance in the city has not been that of, if you remember, the former Toronto mayor, who had some very harsh things to say. But what we do need to do is enforce the laws for everybody. We see some of the bicyclists who are greatest respecters, but others who create irritations, and especially, what we need to do is very carefully analyze what roads are appropriate and best for transportation of cars for those who have a longer commute, and which ones, you know, lend themselves and have been maybe underused as proper arteries for bikes. Preserving green space, of course, is helpful, too, because I can hop on one of my bikes and, you know, do a 25 lap after dinner and still be there before supper, even at this time of year. So I think enforcing the laws will both have respect, lead to respect for bikers, but in turn, enforcing the laws will stop like the guy who drove me off the road when I used to bike commute, and I ended up in a ditch. Thank you.
Shawn Nelson?
I think the city needs to take a look at how we develop appropriate corridors for safe walking and bike trails so that people can get across the city. I've talked with a number of people that commute to communities like Shakopee and Eagan from our district. We need to have those pathways to meet that demand. The other thing, you know, and I think this is a perspective because I have kids in our schools, and, you know, a lot of kids walk to schools, and the city has done a nice job with some safe crossings. I think we need to expand that. I think we need to maintain our sidewalks. I try to walk on them. I think we need to make sure we get the ice and snow off of them as best as we can in the winter. I know that's a challenge, but I try to walk my dog, and frankly, they're dangerous. And these are the paths that our kids are walking to schools. I do think we also need to respect that a lot of people drive, and traffic is a huge concern in our city. We have a lot of people traversing our city, getting off of 494 and getting on Old Shakopee, driving on Nesbit past the golf course. I hear about trucks using that now, driving through our neighborhoods. Those are big safety issues for the community. So having appropriate corridors where people could safely travel is important.
Thank you very much. The next question is for the group of candidates in District Three and Four. We'll start with Patrick Martin, John Olson, Larry Beloga, Larry Frost, Jack Beloga, Larry Frost, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Here's the question. Old Shakopee Road is getting very old and sometimes cannot handle traffic. How could the city council join with the county to address aging roads such as Old Shakopee Road? Can we start with you, Patrick Martin?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is obviously a long simmering issue that gets to the core of the one Bloomington solution that we've been working towards for so long. In the most recent national, most recent national business survey, only 43% of our retail businesses in the city said that our roads and public transportation system were meeting the needs of their employees. Now, that's exactly what we should be looking for as a city, folks who are willing to both live and work in Bloomington. But because we haven't fully integrated that system, they're not able to get effectively from A to B reliably. That's especially concerning, considering the fact that the city itself is projecting that 2/3 of our population growth in the next 40 years will be in the South Loop District around Mall of America, right at the end of Old Shakopee Road. Now, moving forward, it's going to be critical that we work with entities in the county to not only make sure that our basic infrastructure, like roads that attract businesses, that attract residences, are strong, but that they're integrated into an overall network that helps tie our community together as a whole. We can't look at this regionally, we have to look at this holistically, and Old Shakopee is the spine of that entire system.
Thank you. John Olson?
Thank you. We need to be looking at best use of what we have, and the road is constricted by the number of lanes it can have. And so I think that we, as residents, have a role to play here. One way to avoid higher taxes, because getting right-of-way and increasing road size is very costly, is to end up using transit and maybe asking for more transit on that particular roadway, carpooling, et cetera. The other, that best use for what we have, future use ends up meaning that, among other things, we need to consider what will be happening 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road. I've been a voice on the council, one of the early voices, and I'm kind of a persistent guy, who ends up talking about what's going to happen when we have driverless cars. It seems like that will be the case. I'm not promoting it, I'm not saying that we should not have it, but I think it's something that seems to be coming down the pike. What impact will that have on Old Shakopee Road?
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga?
Thank you. Old Shakopee Road is a difficult issue. The age of that corridor shows. One of the things I do not favor is acquiring right-of-way land from the neighbors, which would move out a lot of houses, such as happened in 6...
would move out a lot of houses, such as happened in 66th Street and Richfield. We need to expand the existing quarters of commerce that we have, particularly 494, to handle the traffic, which it was designed to do, which it is not doing. So much of the traffic that's on many of our streets and quarters is due to cut-through traffic. And it is because 494 is absolutely impassable, particularly during rush hour, which today really begins at about 6 until 9, and 3 till about 7. So we're working hard, along with our partners at the state, to get that done, although more funding is necessary to accomplish that.
Thank you very much. Larry Frost.
Okay. First thing is, look at long-term maintenance. This is a problem in this whole state. Most state bodies, and I really can't say if Bloomington has been good on this or not, but have not got a long-term maintenance plan, constantly doing maintenance every year. Why? It's not sexy. That is something that absolutely needs to be done. Second, when you're looking at multiple kinds of media, bike, let's think about bikes and foot traffic. Bike, 150 pounds. Car, 3,000. Putting bikes and cars together is not very smart. Bike, 150-pound. Person, 150 pounds. A bike-person collision is a lot less serious than a bike-car collision. Let's widen our sidewalks where those quarters exist and split them and have bikes on sidewalks. That's safer, and it's also cheap and easy to do quickly to get some kind of mixed-media transportation in the city. The long-term plan for cars, it definitely involves 494, and I agree with Jack that that corridor, and especially the knot at France and 494, which mysteriously appears at 2 o'clock in the morning, needs to be fixed. Transit, I'm sorry, John, transit has not reduced traffic in Minneapolis, and it won't here either.
Thank you very much. Here's a question for the at-large and District Two candidates, starting with Sean Nelson, Eldon Spencer, Michael Arulfo, and Nathan Coulter. What is your vision for racial equity for the city of Bloomington? And as part of your answer, would you comment on anything you have done in your life or career that has promoted racial equity? Can we start with Sean Nelson?
My vision would be to be like my kids, where we don't notice the race and national origin of people, that we treat people as individuals, as friends, based on how they behave, based on how they act towards us. And I think that is the way that we should treat all people. And I think that that is, you know, just something I have tried to do in my entire life, in my business career, from the people I hire, from the subcontractors I work with, from the organizations I work in, is always treating people respectfully as individuals based on their merit.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer.
Thank you. Yes, like Sean, we try to raise our daughters to be respectful and open to all people. In fact, a side benefit is actually both of our girls married guys whose families don't celebrate Christmas, so we get them every year. But throwing that aside, when I was young, growing up in Blue Earth, one of the big problems that we saw, our only real minority were Mexican-Americans and Texans, Americans of Mexican descent. And they'd come up, and the kids essentially wouldn't go back down to school till October, and then they'd come up in April, and it destroyed their chances for an education. So Marsha Front, now Sister Mara and I went out, and we talked to these people, then we talked to businesses. We helped a lot of them find ways to settle in our community so the kids had a lot better chance. And, you know, I'm looking forward to a post-racial society. We like to think of our two grandsons as 20th-century children because they look kind of like the composite American of 2050. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo.
So my vision for Bloomington, really, it's about opportunity, and it's about creating an environment where the diverse populations in Bloomington can feel like they can succeed despite the, no matter what their backgrounds are, if they live on the east side, the west side, if they're a recent immigrant, if, you know, if they're from a family that's just, you know, not particularly wealthy. That's my vision for racial equity. And in terms of my experience, dates all the way back to college. I served as the cultural diversity chair at St. Cloud State, where I represented the diverse populations and helped fight for the populations to get additional dollars so they can fund for student services as well as scholarships. I also served as the student representative to the Title IX Committee, where I participated in an initiative to save St. Cloud State University's women's hockey club. It was, at the time, it was under, it was being challenged, and there was a movement to get rid of it for funding reasons, and I helped spearhead the initiative to save that club. And that's something I'm really, really proud of.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter.
Racial equity and justice are values that I was raised with, even going back to my mom teaching at Normandale Community College and addressing needs resulting from a growing Somali student population there. If we can address those things, if we can bring in those conversations, not only is it the morally right thing to do, but I think we'll have better outcomes for our city as a whole. I think that involves proactively reaching out to communities and engaging with conversations, whether it's a formal town hall here in the council chambers, or even just, you know, I'll be at the Caribou on France and Old Shakopee on Saturday morning, have a cup of coffee and talk to me about what you want to talk to me about. The other thing I would like to see, and this is something I intend to work on absolutely, is diversifying our city boards and commissions, and ensuring that we have a more diverse representation and just better responsiveness in terms of that level of city government.
Thank you very much. I think we have time for two more panels of questions, and then we'll have a question for all of you that will be, what would you like to say for one minute that you did not get a chance to say before? So here's our last round of panel questions. This will be for Jack Beloga, Larry Frost, Patrick Martin, and John Olson. Would you or would you not approve a limit on the number of single-family homes in Bloomington's neighborhoods that could become non-homesteaded rental units? Can we start with Jack Beloga?
Can I ask you to repeat the question, please?
Sure. I should say, what's your position on having a limit on the number of single-family homes in Bloomington's neighborhoods that could become non-homesteaded rental units? I think the thrust of the question is allowing homeowners to rent out their home rather than to live in it.
Okay. And I think this question goes to the question of, should there be ordinances governing the number of rental properties in a given area? I think that's what I'm understanding to be the crux of the question.
Okay. You're welcome to speak to that.
Right now, what the city does is it does not have a limitation on rental properties, although we do require that rentals are required to have a license, and there's an annual inspection that goes along with that to ensure that the property meets code standards and is a livable property and is in good condition. Today, we do not have any great congregation of rental housing in neighborhoods, so I don't see that there's a need to try to govern that by the installation of ordinance, which other, some other communities have done, some to be found as unconstitutional by the means which they are doing it. Others have done it so that it works for that community. But I don't see a need at this moment in Bloomington for that.
Thank you. Larry Frost.
I call this the Airbnb problem, and I think that's where it arises mostly. Look, let's not make a solution in search of a problem. Let's not make regulations until there's a problem. That's my attitude in general, and as your city councilman, that's the way I approach it. When a problem happens, yeah, let's do something about it. Part of the problem with limiting rentals is that it favors some instead of others. The first guys in get to have rentals, and then all the rest of you don't. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think it's reasonable. So I'm opposed to any kind of regulation of that sort. Secondly, if we've got a population that's getting older, and that population may be facing some higher taxes because they were renting our city, if we want the older people, like me, I'm 67, folks, to stay in their houses, maybe some of them need to do an Airbnb, and that'll help them stay where they're at. I'm in favor of that.
Thank you very much. Patrick Martin.
I'd like to echo the comments of Councilmember Beloga and Mr. Frost. At this point, it is a solution, to an extent, in search of a problem. I think we're a lot better served by first, as I mentioned before, trying to preserve our existing housing stock that we have now. We can do that in partnership with regional entities like the Greater Minnesota Housing Fund, again, to prevent those out-of-state investors from coming in and snatching up those properties. We can continue forward-thinking programs like the City of Bloomington's Home Loan Rehabilitation Initiative that's already seen tremendous success. And again, as Mr. Frost had mentioned, there's a lot of seniors living by themselves in the community at the moment. A third of all Bloomington seniors live by themselves, and that's going to double in the next seven years alone. And making sure that the City of Bloomington is reaching out to them to make sure their basic needs are met, and then not cutting them off from opportunities to continue staying in their own homes. The cheapest option for taking care of our seniors in the community is better for everybody long-term. Again, I think cutting off those options is a solution in search of a problem. At this point, we need to be more comprehensive in our thinking.
Thank you. John Olson.
Thank you. A key function of government at any level is to help communities work well. And in this question, the market needs to be given every chance to make it work well. And one of the realities is that there are, the millennials are beginning to start showing an interest in having yards with houses. But I think in the context of this, we're talking also about the possibility of some neighborhoods possibly being picked up by the market to go with smaller and perhaps townhomes or apartments that go up to several stories. And so we need to let all of that work its way through. In terms of rentals, that's one of the things that I've been actually working on just lately. Those who own rental homes, in terms of single-family neighborhoods, need to end up making sure that they're good neighbors in terms of upkeep. And amen.
Thank you very much. Here's a question for the at-large and District Two candidates. Do you feel that citizens have enough influence in city council meetings to actually affect change in city policies? Can we start with Michael Arulfo, then Nathan Coulter, Eldon Spencer, Sean Nelson?
So my current observation of this dynamic, and I attended, I've attended several city council meetings, as well as some commission events, I, more often not, I'm hearing the comments from the individuals that attended these meetings that they feel dissatisfied. And some of it is because they feel strongly about an issue. I recognize that. But I think also some of it is the fact that the council currently could do a better job at engaging the communities, and I think this applies to the commissions as well. I think if there was indeed true engagement and the willingness to listen and to get input from the community, I don't think I would be getting the comments that I'm getting right now while knocking on doors and attending the city council meetings that I've attended, as well as some of the commission meetings. I really feel that there is definitely a lack of engagement.
Thank you very much. Nathan Coulter.
One of the priorities that I always talk about is a more responsive and accessible government. And certainly, the conversations, the thousands of conversations I've had with folks right at their own doorsteps, seems to indicate a real lack, a feeling of a real lack of that kind of responsiveness. I have heard that from folks all across the city. And, you know, as I said earlier, I think it does fall to elected officials to proactively engage folks in those conversations, even going so far as, when you're not running for reelection, continuing to door-knock, continuing to meet people at their doors, and just, you know, I'm your council member, I don't have any particular agenda, I just want to hear from you what your thoughts are on the city. The other thing I'd like to see is council members be able to set up their own email lists that they can use as they like to keep in touch with folks. I know state legislators and members of Congress use them. It seems to me that it would be a fairly low-cost option that would allow for that kind of direct engagement.
Thank you very much. Eldon Spencer.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with Nathan that the format of a neighborhood meeting or a town hall is far more conducive than the 20 minutes we allocate at each council meeting, which often are taken up by four people, or sometimes not taken at all because of the effort to come down here. If we have a meeting in neighborhoods, especially when the neighborhoods have a concern, I think that lends itself very well. And as far as the block walking, yes, I talked about what I've learned about being on the council, but I've learned a lot also going door-to-door, just on the housing issue we'll pick. One person said, I mean, we have a great program in terms of, we haven't talked about it, home improvements, you know, where you can borrow up to $20,000, low income. This guy had applied, but he didn't get an answer, yes or no, within five weeks, and during that time, all his bids expired. I've asked, what's happening, and I expect an answer.
Thank you very much. Sean Nelson.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the comments of everyone else here, that I've heard from a number of people in the community as I've been outdoor-knocking, that they feel that they have not been listened to on various issues. Certainly, sometimes that's, you know, maybe a decision didn't go the way they would have preferred. But I think we have to recognize that there's been a number of petitions within this city on various issues. And in particular, one of the things that struck me is when I attended the June council meeting for Highland Greens, and I heard three members, I believe, of the task force get up and speak and say that the direction the city council was looking at going was inconsistent with what they felt that the task force had done. And I think that sends a dangerous precedent to asking the community to be involved and get engaged, and at least have a perception that they haven't been heard. I do give the city credit for continuing to try to improve its communication with people on the front end, get engaged. You know, there's always more that we can do, and I think it is incumbent upon us that serve to get out in the community and listen.
Thank you very much. Well, that ends all the panel questions. And now, you can each have a chance for one minute to address any question that wasn't asked of your group or comment further on any answer you gave before. And for this, I'd like to start in this order, Eldon Spencer, Sean Nelson, Nathan Coulter, Michael Arulfo. That'll be this group, and then do the order for the rest. So Eldon Spencer, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'll take one of each. One that wasn't asked of my group was the housing question. I already talked about the home improvement programs that weren't, I don't think, addressed in those answers. The other one is that first-time down payment. I shouted out my daughter in Las Vegas, the ones in New Jersey, one's composer and one runs a theater company. They're good middle-class citizens, but getting that first down payment is tough. So we've got to leap on federal and state programs that provide first-time down payment assistance for first-time homeowners who otherwise would be great responsible but can't get that money together. The one that we were asked was on equal rights, and let me tell you, it was quite an honor to represent the men and women on the board of the St. Paul J.C.'s who went to the United States Supreme Court and successfully defended Minnesota's right to, the organizations like the St. Paul J.C.'s and later Rotary and others had to comply with Minnesota's human rights laws and allow women to be officers and voting members or get out of the state.
Thank you. Sean Nelson.
I'd also like to talk about affordable housing and rental, which was a question we did not get. I have spent more than a decade working in the housing industry to make homeownership more available to people. The cost burden that had been mentioned for people, almost 30 percent of a new housing unit is due to government regulation. That is more than double our neighboring states like Wisconsin. We can do better than that. We can lower some of those costs. And I've worked for a long time on those issues at the state and federal level. In terms of what Councilmember Spencer just said, in terms of homebuyer, first-time down payment assistant, I worked with the legislature this past year, and we got passed, and the governor voted, signed a bill that allows tax-advantaged savings accounts, similar to a 529 plan, similar to a 401K plan, to help save up for a down payment. So I've been there. I've worked on that issue, and helping families afford that first house and build rental properties that are more affordable. I think that's very, very important for our community.
Thank you very much. Michael Arulfo.
I'd like to close by saying that I believe that politics is something that should be accessible to everybody. It's not just for the wealthy. It's not for those who are part of the establishment. It's not for those who are incredibly famous. I think politics should be a forum that can be accessible to individuals like myself, who represent different diverse populations in Bloomington, but also somebody that's relatable to individuals like Sean. Not this Sean, but Sean, a member of my campaign, and he was, is graduate of Kennedy High School, and struggled with dyslexia through school. school. And he struggled so hard that he had to be, his parents had to move into a private school so he would be successful. And Sean was very successful, he enrolled at Mankato. One of the things, the first question he asked me was, as a candidate, is he told me that, you know, he told me that story, and then he said that he would only support a candidate that could relate to that story. And I shared with him my story as an immigrant struggling with language and learning, and that I could relate to him.
Thank you very much. Next, John Olson. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nathan Coulter. I apologize.
No worries. Thank you. Well, I kind of wish we had compared notes beforehand because I also prepared to talk about affordable housing. You know, it's funny, or not funny, but a while back, I was at the Veep Block Party this past summer, and I was talking with somebody who works at Veep, and I said, if you had the top item on your wish list, you know, I said, I'm running for city council, if you had that top item on your wish list, what would it be? And she said, to address the affordable housing crisis. The reality is that this is a need that's already going unmet in Bloomington. We have a lot of older folks here, many of whom have been in the community a long time and want to stay here, but maybe they don't need three-bedroom, two-bath. And likewise, younger families are getting priced out of the market. And I serve on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority with John, and I've worked on the NOAA Working Group as well. There are innovative policy and investment solutions that we can take advantage of if we have the forward-looking leadership that will focus on those things. The reality is, we just need to do a much better job of making sure we have a wide variety of housing options available for a wide variety of circumstances.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me that you hadn't had a chance to speak. Now, John Olson.
Thank you. Within the first month of my being on the city council, I realized I needed to follow a guideline, which I called the credo, looked it up, and that was the right word, and that is get good information, understand all points of view, and don't make a decision until all of that's current. That created a problem for me answering yes or no on the T-21 or the smoking issue. And just to illustrate how I work at this, I will be meeting with somebody from that group later this week to hear what they have to say. Relationships are important for any organization, and certainly a community, and how we operate as city council members. I have good working relationships with business, labor, nonprofits, Hennepin County, Minnesota, and especially with residents. The taste of Scandinavia tends to be a place that I meet with people about all kinds of topics. I'm able to do so, I'm busy, but I have a very flexible schedule.
Thank you. Patrick Martin.
Yeah, I just kind of want to touch very briefly on some nuts and bolts economic issues, especially when we look at the long-term trajectory for Bloomington. It's pretty fascinating. I did some number crunching on census data, and our population increased by an average of 180% every eight years between 1930 and the early 1970s. That is exponential growth, almost unheard of. Then, we hit the mid-'70s, and our population leveled off, but our commercial real estate value again doubled over the next 20 years to over $2 billion. Why is that? We weren't attracting new residents, but we were encouraging innovative businesses. We were making Bloomington an attractive place for large corporations to settle. But we've relied on that strategy for years and years. Look at the East Side. That commercial real estate value hasn't continued to increase, but it's largely restaurants, retail, service industry employers, low wage, oftentimes low-skill, low-benefit positions. And as soon as you hit an economic downturn and tourism drops off, well, you set yourself up for a pretty rocky situation. We need to diversify Bloomington's overall economy, especially the East Side, to guarantee that the folks we want to settle here can set up an effective, affordable life.
Thank you. Larry Frost.
First of all, sanctuary cities. Mr. Arulfo, I want to disagree with you. One of the principal roles that we haven't talked about for a city councilman is a leader. If being a sanctuary city means, and it's all over the board what it means, but if it means defying federal law, I don't want to be standing in front of our high school seniors and telling them, I'm going to defy law. We are a country that follows the rule of law. If we don't like the law, change it. Second, racial equity. When I went to war in Panama, my team leader was a Latina, my senior translator was an Asian-American, and my driver was a six-foot-tall blond, blue-eyed Texan. None of them cared when we started taking sniper fire about all that. When we had to dig our senior chief warrant officer out, he didn't care either. That's the way I approach racial equity. It's an individual thing, it's not a group thing, it's not really the business of the government, it's the business of the parents. But you have to treat people as individuals as an individual yourself. Frost for Council, www.frostforcouncil.com to talk about all this in more detail.
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga.
Thank you. The conversation has been about communications to the other groups, so I'd like to weigh in on that. One of the chief forms of communication that Bloomington has is the Bloomington briefing, which is issued every other month, as you all know, gets mailed to you. And that's an award-winning vehicle. What we're doing is, is we're not really leveraging that, and I have brought to council the idea of expanding that to a monthly newsletter so that we can be more current with issues. What the Bloomington briefing does is, is provide a historical overview of what has occurred rather than what can occur just because of newsprint size. And I feel that we can do a better job in communicating what the city council is doing, why they're doing it, and how they're going to do it by using the briefing more effectively.
Thank you very much. Well, that concludes the question part of our forum, and now I'll invite you all to give closing remarks for a minute each. Can we start with you, Patrick Martin?
Sure, most definitely. I would like to recognize off the bat that we're extraordinarily blessed to live in what for quite a while has been one of the strongest cities in the state of Minnesota. I mean, our unemployment typically is a full percent lower than the national average. We tend to bounce back better after economic downturns because of our diverse workforce. But really, and I mean this more than a cliche, when I look at Bloomington, I see America. We started off strong on the East Side, we expanded west. Even once we built out kind of our overall landmass, we continued to innovate, we continued to move forward and increase economic value. But just like America overall, we're getting older, we're diversifying. We haven't invested quite as much as we should in some basic infrastructure across our entire communities. And it's going to be crucial long-term that we get back to the nuts and bolts. We need to support our growing senior population. We need to attract and retain those diverse, younger families that will be our economic engine. And we need to make sure that no matter what neighborhood you are in in Bloomington, you have that same slice of the prosperity that folks are generating and receiving overall. Patrickforbloomington.com.
Thank you. John Olson.
Thank you. When people end up interacting with each other, it really boils down to values. And sometimes, we end up erring on the side of what we think is important for us and forget many of the important returns that we get when we act well as a community. Boils down to values. I was raised in a faith community. One of the things that's pretty universal across faith communities on this planet is the golden rule, do unto others as you would like them to do unto you. I can still, as a former Boy Scout, tick off the, a scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, and all the rest. As a government teacher, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people, all humans, are created equally, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I can, but I won't have time, to give the four-way test of Rotary that starts out, is it the truth, and then there's three more. Thank you for coming up, for those who are watching this as a standing-room-only crowd.
Thank you very much. Jack Beloga.
Thank you. My vision for Bloomington is a high quality of life, good jobs and housing, superior educational opportunities for our children, and outstanding city services at affordable cost. I have experienced leadership, I have the background of civic participation, I have the business experience, and the educational background to continue to serve you, the citizens of Bloomington. I ask for your vote on November 7th. Please look at my website, www.jackbeloga.com, I'm sorry, jackbelogaforcitycouncil.com, to find more information about me and my positions on items that were talked about tonight.
Thank you. Larry Frost.
If I'm elected, I'll do several things that I'm going to promise you. First of all, I will try to be a leader, not just a representative. Second, I will listen to you, not lecture you, and that means specific things. I will run town halls at least quarterly. I will also get a young man who knows how to do this to get social media up so I can communicate with you directly. Those are promises. In making decisions on the city council, my first solution is not going to be jumping into a new city program. I'm going to look for partnerships with business, nonprofits, and other private groups. I don't think necessarily the city solution alone is always the best way to do things. I stand for the rule of law. Everyone treated equally, the law enforced the same for everyone. I'm an attorney, I work in business law, I also have had two small businesses, not as big as Jack's by any means, and I've worked with large corporations. I understand all those things. I've also had experience working in large organizations. I've worked on the staff for generals who run 22,000 people in combat. I understand how to work with organizations and make that work.
Thank you very much. Sean Nelson.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters, the other candidates, and all of you for attending and watching this forum. The City of Bloomington is a wonderful city to live in, to raise a family, work, and to grow a business. I will work to build a community where we can eat, shop, and play in our neighborhoods. I will work to bring in new restaurants into our neighborhoods and encourage innovative companies to locate here. I will work to provide community spaces where young kids can play, parents can connect, youth sports can thrive, and residents of all ages can gather and stay active, and to protect our existing parks and recreation areas. I will work to meet the housing and transportation needs of our older residents and to attract new families into our community. I will work to ensure the city is a strong partner with our school district, providing mentorship, internship, and encouragement of college and career paths. I will work to make our community a place where all are welcome. If this is the type of community you would like, please vote for me, Sean Nelson. You can learn more on Facebook, @NelsonForBloomington, and my website, nelsonforbloomington.com.
Thank you. Eldon Spencer.
Thank you. I talked about how much I learned in six years on the Planning Commission and in six months on the council, but as I mentioned, going door-to-door, you learn a lot more. You learn how much people really care about how well their city is being run. You learn about how much people share by love of the city's natural resources, that our neighborhood's quality of life. You learn how much people are concerned over careful spending of their tax revenues. And so I ask you, I continue to try to bring to my council membership, and will do so if elected, the enthusiasm of our four- and five-year-old grandchildren and the hopefulness, the persistence of an old wrestler, even though not the body anymore. And I ask for your vote, but if you don't vote for me, I still am going to listen to you because I'm going to listen to everybody, it's going to be a voice for all. I have a website that's in the directory, but also I'm going to stay as a listed person in the phone book, for those who prefer that, and I'll take your calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Arulfo.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and thanks to all of you for showing up. I think this is a great sign. It's always great to have this much engagement, and it's the key for the democratic process to work. We live in a great city. Bloomington is an awesome city. My wife and I decided to move here for lots of the same reasons, why folks move here to Bloomington, the green space, the great schools, as well as the great residents as well. To move Bloomington forward, I think we need to do things that will address the issues of struggling, the declining wages, and the rising costs of homes and basic health care. I've lived through this struggle. When my parents first immigrated to the U.S., my father took a job in a factory making $10 an hour, and so we were not able to afford to buy a house until my parents were able to get into union training programs that allowed them to get better jobs. So I think that I would like to see this opportunity available to the residents of Bloomington. I think that's the key to success.
Thank you. Nathan Coulter.
Well, thank you again to the League for hosting this, and thank you all, including my fellow candidates, for being here. If there is something that you haven't heard from me tonight that you'd like to hear, I encourage you to check out my website, it's just neighborsfornathan.com. They say the first rule of politics is always ask for their vote, so I'm asking for your vote tonight. I would also remind you that early voting has already started, so you can just swing up here to City Hall and vote even before November 7th. I believe that my roots in the community, I'm proud to be a product of our public schools, my experience working with elected officials and other organizations at all levels of government, and my vision for what we can be if we work together will serve our community well on the council. The last thing I'm going to add is actually two last things, and you might not expect to hear this, hold me accountable. If I'm lucky enough to win in November, keep in touch with me, hold me accountable. I believe when you value something, you work hard to make it better, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you very much. Thank you, candidates, for participating in the forum and for running for office. Thank you to the sponsors, League of Women Voters Bloomington and Bloomington PTA Council. The forum has been video recorded, you can watch it on the LWV Bloomington website, on the city's website, and on YouTube, and on Bloomington Cable TV. Thank you, audience, for attending tonight, and everyone, please remember to vote on or before November 7th. That concludes the forum.